Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission Meeting for Thursday, March 13th, 2025. Please rise for a pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Take your role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpace? Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time the planning commission can make, can take action to approve the March 13th, 2025 agenda and...
But would like to amend to allow for a presentation?
Okay.
We don't need to vote on that, do we? No, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, you do.
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay. So we want to amend the agenda for the presentation of plaque for Bob Slavinsky. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
Second.
By Roger. Discussion, none, please take your role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpace?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest, is there any commissioner of any type of conflict of interest on tonight's agenda? So? Any? None? Approval of minutes, at this time the planning commission can approve the February 13th, 2025 meeting minutes. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Shelley, second.
Second.
By Mick. Discussion? None, please take your role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpace? Chair Whitliff?
Thank you. Correspondence has, correspondence has been shared with the planning commissioners and will not be read aloud. So at this time, we'd like to call Mr. Bob Slavinsky up, please. Is he here?
He's here. I heard you. In the back. He said he was. Better. He wasn't coming. Said you better because we're doing something.
In fact, of our appreciation for your eight years on the City of Manistee Planning Commission. You're a little bulldog for us, you did the dirty work. And we miss you and we appreciate everything you've done and say it to say. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You got it.
It's gonna be hard.
I know.
I know.
Difficult.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, it was a pleasure.
Presentation speaker, Williams and Works, community engagement report and draft of master plan.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
I am here back to more or less take the opportunity to really want to focus our discussion today on taking your comments on the goals and objectives draft document that was before you, or I should say draft statements. So just as a refresh, right, the city is engaging in the development, an update of its master plan, there is a master plan that the city has currently, this is an update to that and over in the fall, in maybe early winter you could call it, we did some community engagement, I know Teresa did some with the community, we also had a community survey that was out and we also had a couple workshops before Christmas time and what we did then was develop a community engagement report that shared out not only what happened but gave a little bit of understanding of what the community said through those community engagement reports and, oh, sorry, through those in community engagement events. And then the idea is, is so this is kind of its own standalone document and the idea is then we would take this document along with your institutional knowledge, kind of the, the way that you understand and know the City of Manistee and take that to then provide feedback on the draft goals and objectives document that was provided to you all. Now, there is 12 pages of goals and objectives and some communities take the TAC where they're going to have as many goals and objectives as it makes sense per all of the different subject matters, topics, concerns of a community. Other communities are like, hey, we want like one thing per, one goal statement per kind of topic and then we'll, you know, have like a handful of objectives that keep it a little bit shorter. Not knowing what you all, kind of your preferences was as individuals and then also as a planning commission, what I did was based on the community engagement that we did and then looking at your existing master plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan, it's the county's plan, but it is the city's by, by adoption and by recognition through the DNR as well as the downtown plan and a few other documents, Peninsula District work that has been done, I put all those together in one document for you to more or less get your input on what is still relevant, what still sticks, what doesn't make sense anymore and to provide you the opportunity to hone those down as much as you'd like. Like I said, there maybe you want all of them and you want 12 pages of goals and objective statements, maybe you want something a little bit less, but I'm here today to receive comments and feedback specifically on those with the intent of developing a more polished chapter that explains the community engagement and how that relates to the goals of the master plan. And just as a refresh, goal and object, goals and objectives in a master plan are really important when it comes to planning commission decision, you have sites, site plans that you're reviewing, it can really be an instrumental part of sort of the decision-making process when you're looking at developments from the perspective of community development, physical growth, that kind of thing. So these are nothing to be taken lightly, but they are not law, they're just guiding documents or statements, rather. So with that, I would be happy to entertain like any questions you all have, we can also go through these kind of like goal, goal by goal and more or less discuss them, but I really am not sure about how you guys want to handle this, so I want to kind of give the floor back to you all.
All right, well, I'll open it up to the Commissioners and what they would like to do, so. Start with Ken, I mean, anything, I know you're new, but we can work down.
Yeah, kind of just, yeah, just listen to what everybody says.
All right, Mick, what would you like?
Well, the only thing is, again, we have three goals, all on housing. And I would think it would make more sense to have housing as a goal and address and kind of remove some of the redundancy between the three, that was the one that stuck out is to, to have one major goal and then kind of list the key components and then balance that against some of the objectives that the community is looking forward to.
Sure, sure, I'm happy to like...
Does that, does that make sense, because?
That makes sense to me, it is not like earlier in my document, so I'm also interested in the other discussion that the planning Commissioners have, but yeah, that, that's valuable input. And also like if you like are interested in, you know, specifically giving specific statements about striking sentences and stuff, I'm here for that level of specificity too, although you're able to, you can pass those on to Teresa and I can take those on like offline from this meeting too.
But again, that's just kind of my experience of working with the government, you would have a key goal and then those other things would be subdivided, we have like three goals for each...
Topic, area.
Exactly, and I think it would make it easier reading and easier to understand if we just kind of limit one goal and then work the objectives, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
No, it's, that's very good, Mick. Pam?
No, I agree with Mick, it's because you got like Parks and Recreation has like eight.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm agreeing with Mick, it's like Parks and Recreation have like eight and, and, you know, Transportation's got like six.
Yeah.
I think we just need to pare it down some. Less nitpicking.
So with that in mind, I would be interested to, you know, grand ideas, what you guys are looking for, what makes sense in terms of if you want to kind of hone it down, is there anything in particular that comes to top of mind?
Well, okay, Ken, you know, again, I, as I'm, my familiarity with it is you would have your goal and then these other subcategories would actually be objectives and then you would have your, your actions, in other words, how do you get to that, you know, those objectives?
So, sure, sure.
Right now, we kind of, we, we just, we, we create a, we have all these goals and then underneath are really actions, create, those are doing, those are things that you do, not necessarily objectives, right, so?
Okay.
I, I mean, that's, yep, yep, that's how I looked at it, so.
Shelley?
I'm on the same line of thinking with him because of the, the complexity and just the overwhelming nature of the number of goals, which is fantastic, a ton of work went into this, is there a way to condense it into fewer, maybe overarching, more encompassing goals with the objectives or action plans to follow? Like he said, housing is probably a goal, breaking it down into very specific separate goals, it, I think is, can probably be under the same umbrella. There are a lot of steps here and like they said, there's, there's eight goals on Parks and Recs and every single one of them is relevant, every single one of them is probably necessary, obviously they're based on feedback, but getting into a more manageable format
Okay.
to be executed. I would like to see.
Yep, and it, and, and again, and I think part of that too is then if you have your goals, your objectives, and then you have your action items, then as people works, works through them, you can actually check off what you've accomplished, right?
So one, one question I have is, is so in a master plan, there's actually an implementation chapter and the implementation chapter is kind of like that, I kind of call it like a to-do list or kind of breadcrumb trail, so like, you know, five years from now, let's say half of you are not here and others, new faces, right? It's that list of actions that you're actually trying to take on as a planning commission to do, that hasn't been written yet, right? And so is it, is it, I guess my question is, is that so like in this chapter, it would be like the goals and objectives and then in the implementation chapter, you could see like a, like an action plan or a list of items, would that be like a fair way to think about it?
That makes more sense.
Because I mean like, because I know some people love goals and objectives, visionary, 30,000-foot view all day long, other people are like, what are we doing though about it? And so like that's, you have the whole master plan document together, that's where you have those lofty visions and then the tangible, you know, actions that eventually you can cross off and so on and so forth, so. So the long story short is, is we're not there yet, but I, I hear what you're saying and so far I hear like, let's make it shorter and I will have more, a few more questions related to that is, once we get through all the Commissioners' comments.
Marlene?
Yeah, I agree with the questions they brought up, but I'd like to also see some kind of a timeframe, we discuss all this stuff and then it like just goes out into no man's land and stuff, but if we could have some kind of a, like in all the goals, like a timeframe that, you know, to accomplish this or that, and I know things come up, you can't always keep in that, but just kind of give us a, is this something in the year that is the goal or is this a two-year plan or something?
Yeah. So implement, in the implementation chapter, like something else and done it before and be happy to do it here too, is with those with the action plan, you sort of have maybe like three tiers of, of a timeline, so it's not so specific because otherwise like the plan becomes irrelevant if something changes, but it's that short-term, midterm, long-term kind of thinking as opposed to like one to three years or one to five years, I like to kind of make it a little more flexible, that way the commission can take on those matters that make sense just depending on the changing nature of the community issues and matters and that kind of thing, so I will say that that would be coming in an implementation, implementation chapter, which is two chapters from now, but, but that's a good point.
Yeah.
Roger, Roger?
Roger? Oh, as you said, well, my thought first is find out which direction the city council wants to go and to see one minute we're Victorian, next minute we're not Victorian and then as far as how that's all just subject to what the decision is as far as the group of the people. I mean, we could have housing for retirees, are we gonna have housing for air, for what do I call rentals? I mean, no, that's the direction we got to find out, where, which way should we go? I mean, that's all I'm saying and like I say with Mike said, yeah, you gotta pick out a, an object or a subject and say housing would be a good one, but what are we gonna do with housing if we got nobody working? Then we're gonna have, now what do we do, we got housing going up all over, you know? So now we need jobs, well, where are we gonna get jobs? Well, that's another issue to concern about, but, and another thing I noticed in this printout you have, I didn't notice much about health, I'd like to see as far as the hospital because we're losing every day, somebody's moving out and I mean, like you say, today you can't have a baby unless you go to Cadillac, not that I'm worried, but I mean, what?
It's nice of you to think of folks who are in that position.
Yes, and if we're looking for young people that come to Manistee, you know, come to Manistee, but your family, you're gonna have to take them to Cadillac to have them, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but yeah, I'll go with the pick one subject and work on it, I mean, it makes sense rather than be all over.
We're a community of older citizens, because I'm with a senior center too and, but what are we gonna offer, we can't live without youth coming here, keeping our, our young people, they graduate and they're gone, we need something to entice them to stay here, like the hospitals, schools, jobs, I mean, housing that they can afford, you know, and I'd like to see that kind of incorporated in your plans.
I, I agree with the Commissioners, drill down on, on the master plan, previous, been involved in a couple of these things and we had a lot of pie in the sky and we never got to ground zero on anything, it was always out there and we really didn't drill down. It's time. So that's why we want to have breakout groups with a number of the community committees to help with this.
Okay.
Teresa and I laid out a plan the other day with Ken, on groups that we want to hear, have with us.
Okay.
Little, you know, during, during the week, four or five people, three or four, whatever, to help mold this master plan.
Okay. So is that something that then you guys will kind of like, Teresa and I will touch base about, but then you guys will kind of fill me in on how that goes, that way we can make sure that, if it's coming through, if it's coming through, let me rephrase that, if it's coming kind of through the planning commission, at some point I would get some kind of, I guess, feedback kind of from the planning commission then, that would help inform kind of the direction you want to go with the goal and objective statements?
Yes.
Okay.
So the chair of that particular committee or group, take all the notes, we'll funnel it over to Teresa and Caitlin and then you'll be updated.
Okay, that would be very helpful, just because you guys have had a lot of good work done in the last 10 to 15 years and that's where a lot of these goals and objectives came from, so having them be, have an understanding of what's relevant and what's no longer relevant or kind of how to focus in on that is, would be really, really helpful, so I appreciate that.
This, the way I think we're gonna have it laid out, it will be a lot of fun.
You said a lot of?
Lot of fun.
Okay.
We're just not gonna sit here and listen and then go with whatever's presented.
Oh, yeah.
Which happened before.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, that, that would not be my intent, like, so I appreciate if you guys are gonna be doing that, so, yeah, okay, all right, that is all I have unless there are any other questions.
So like Roger, is there gonna be an opportunity to actually look at other goals like Roger mentioned, access to healthcare and maybe improved educational opportunities?
Economic, economic opportunities, the stores coming, you're in order, things like that?
Yeah, so it sounds like you are gonna be doing some work, so kind of whatever comes out from that and I will say, like, you could look at it another, again, another way, this is not a polished or finished chapter.
Right.
So you will absolutely get the opportunity because there's no, there's no introduction, there's like, this is just statements, right? And then, so like you will get that opportunity to look at that again and then we'll do some, eventually, do some future land use work, do some implement, future land use chapter work, implementation chapter work and then everything that you've seen to date, including these and then those other two chapters will all be brought together in a polished master plan, draft master plan document that's got pictures and, you know, it looks really polished, our graphic designer will work on it, you'll see everything together, so you'll still have multiple opportunities to see, you know, the work that we're in the middle of doing.
If I might interject here.
Go ahead, Roger.
You, you suggested that we should strike or whatever as far as review what we've got and I would just like to say, I'd like to keep as much public input in this as we can.
Sure.
Because if we start scratching out what they suggest, there's no sense having public input, so, you know, like you say, I, I just soon keep, like you mentioned earlier, if it's 20 items, it's 20 items, that's what the public wants, you know, that's my personal feeling.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Any one else?
I just want to say thank you, this is extremely thorough.
Okay.
Went into it, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I really like, if you guys want a simpler, happy to boil that down, yeah, different communities want to do different things, sometimes I'm surprised how much a community wants to put in their goals and objectives because really how easy to, is it to digest it, other communities, they want like five to 10 goals, you know, in and out and done, so happy to take your guys' direction.
Want to be able to achieve them.
I'm very, I'm very impressed with the, the data that you collected from all of these that we had and how concisely you've put it all together, it's, it's, I was really impressed when I was, I had read it several times, but it was good.
And I will also say, so the community engagement report is to be included as the appendix in the master plan, so like it is, it is and will be available to the public, like, you know, for, for posterity or whatnot, so, you know, that, just to be able to share within the name of transparency that, you know, that will be out there for anyone to review and have available for them to consume now and later in the, later in the future, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Okay, move along to short-term res, rental presentation. Teresa? Tracy?
If you'll please.
Tracy. That's not Tracy. Who is that? That's our girl.
So hello again, just to let you know, all know who I am again, I am Teresa Waldo, the Community Development Director for the City of Manistee, also do the planning and the zoning for that department. So we are here again tonight to talk about short-term rental and I just have a few simple sentences and then a very short video and then we can proceed on to the public hearing. So currently, short-term rentals are not allowed in the city. We're here tonight to decide on an ordinance to address short-term rentals. We want to balance between residents, neighborhoods, short-term rental owners and tourism. So that's all that I have and then we'll do a short video that I found.
All right.
I believe Airbnb is important to our community, it brings people in and these people are interesting people from all over the world, we've had people from 15 at least, different countries of the world and all across the United States and all across the state of Michigan coming to stay with us and they are enjoying the community experience by being here, we are here with them, so it's safe and totally enjoyable. Why a city won't embrace it, I don't know, I can't really understand at all why any neighbor or any city would be opposed to this practice of having someone stay in your home where you reside.
One of the issues that our family is concerned with is the short-term rental situation with it seemingly sometimes being a little bit lax and not controlling enough and specifying the dynamics of what it means and, and sometimes when it is specified and just monitored or enforced, which allows things to continue to happen in our south side neighborhood.
Balance, balance is key, there's a, there's a point where a residential neighborhood will become less so, more commercialized with too many vacation rental properties, so that's what we've been trying to figure out is what is the best balance for each district? The districts that already allow short-term rentals are those that are close to downtown, close to the water, we don't allow them anywhere else in the city, so, and, and because of that, we've got great access to all of the places that visitors and residents want to spend time being around, the downtown businesses, the beach, just the beauty of our dunes, all of our parks, so that's why we allow them, because that's where people primarily want to be when they visit Grand Haven for a week or so. But that being said, there's still many residents that live in those neighborhoods and they have different needs and different desires for what they want their neighborhood to be, they get up, they go to work there, kids go to school there, so we try to accommodate both of them because both residents and visitors are important to our community.
Where we live right now, there is only, well, there's only one on this street that is a, a legal short-term rental, but the encroachment, you can see it happening, so I'm very concerned about the growth of short-term rentals in this area, specifically in this neighborhood, because this neighborhood, as Jan mentioned, the master plan says it's a single-family residential neighborhood, that's the way it should be or was originally designed, it's a historic neighborhood, a lot of these old homes have been around for a long, long time and the owners of the homes are, with almost without exception, are proud of their, proud of their homes, proud of their neighborhoods. So, you know, the issue becomes with short-term rentals, proliferation of short-term rentals, do we allow them just to, to happen at will? And then the, the quality of life in the neighborhoods during the summer, I didn't move into Grand Haven thinking it was a quiet little town in the summer, I know better, but that's part of the fun of living here. The problem is the traffic congestion, the fact that in the wintertime, the neighborhoods are kind of dark, if you're gonna allow these short-term rentals to be all over the place, these neighborhoods get kind of dark.
So as you can see, I picked this video because of the fact of...
When I started drinking warm water to help, help me lose weight.
Sorry, trying to show you both sides of it. Now, I am the liaison for the city, to you as the planning commission, but I'm also lis, listening to all the residents, so I thought that kind of gave a good balance. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it did.
All right, okay. We will now move into the public hearing. Are we gonna hear from Tracy? Is, no?
Tracy says no.
So we're moving to the public hearing, it is 7:27, and we'll open the public hearing.
Okay.
And I just have a couple of things to read, so this is a notice that was in the Manistee News Advocate, notice of public hearing for proposed zoning ordinance. City of Manistee Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on their regular scheduled meeting for proposed changes to the City of Manistee zoning ordinance on Thursday, March 13th at 7:00 PM in council chambers at City Hall, telephone number 231-398-2803 at 70 Maple Street, Manistee, Michigan, 49660. Hearing is being held to consider adoption of an ordinance to enact new Part 8, Chapter 868, entitled Short-Term Rentals and amended Chapter 1482, entitled Residential. Rental properties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Manistee, Chapter 868. Public hearing purpose, amend, amendment to the City of Manistee zoning ordinance as follows, Z25-02, an ordinance to enact new Part 8, Chapter 868, entitled Short-Term Rentals and amended Chapter 1482, entitled Residential. Rental properties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Manistee, Chapter 868, copies of the proposed amendment. Copies of the proposed amendment are available for review or purchase at the Office of the Clerk, City Hall, 70 Maple Street, Manistee, Michigan, 231-398-2803, and on the city's webpage, www.manstee mi.gov. Interested parties are welcome to attend the hearing, or written comments with signatures can be submitted to the City of Manistee Community Development Office, 70 Maple Street, Manistee, Michigan, 49660, by the end of business day on the day of the meeting. Written comments will be delivered to the planning commissioners, but not, will not be read publicly, but allowed publicly during the meetings, according to the City Planning Commission bylaws.
And you've received all of those in, in the email and in your packets, all the letters that I've received the last few days and emails.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the, um, just, public hearing. You want me to read the blued out, or just the circle?
Just the circle ones.
Okay.
Yep.
It's about comments for public hearing. The Chair of the Planning Commission shall announce that a public hearing will be conducted on, on a request. There are several of them, so please bear with me. The Chair may read public hearing announcement as published in a newspaper, which I just did, and give a brief description of the hearing, subject, and public notice procedure. The Chair may announce the following hearing rules. A, Chair will recognize each speaker. When the speaker has the floor, he or she will not be interrupted unless time has been expired, which is five minutes. Person speaking without being recognized shall be out of order. Please don't. Each speaker shall state their name and address for the record and may present written comments for the record, and those written comments will go to Teresa. Speaker shall address all comments and questions to the planning commissioners, and comments will be limited to the subject matter of the public hearing. Unless weighed by the planning commission for a specific meeting or a specific speaker, public comment shall be limited to five minutes per speaker, one time only. If a group of people wish to be heard on one subject, a spokesman may be designated. For those who request more than five minutes, be permitted for collective comments of the group as presented by the speaker. Normal civil discourse and decorum is expected at all times. Applause, shouting, outbursts, demonstrations, name-calling, and, and other provocative speech or behavior may result in removal from, from the hearing or adjournment. So, we want to get through this, so please. Okay, so, in B, you want to go on B?
Nope.
No? Okay. The applicant may present any comments and explanation of the case. Applicant's presentation shall, shall not be a subject, excuse me here, so, applicant's presentation, and I can't read what you wrote here, Teresa, so...
Oh, sorry.
You okay?
That's okay.
You all right?
Okay.
He can't read her writing.
I cannot read Teresa's writings.
Okay.
Okay? Presentation shall not be a subject to the five-minute limitation. Last, city staff or any consultant serving with the city shall present their reports, so, thank you for bearing with me. All right. So, and it is, okay, 7:35, it is open, public hearing. So, okay, so if anybody has any comment, please come to the podium, name and address, and you, you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Nick Lucina, I live on 8th Street. The first, I saw the review in the paper, I didn't know the entire document was available, but you mentioned that the, that temporary short-term rentals are not allowed in the city at this point by code, but they haven't, so, I'm curious if this document has a protocol of enforcing when the, when the new code is broken? If there's literally a methodology of what constitutes a complaint? Who then is responsible for listing the complaint? Does it require a police action? A person with appropriate witness, record and submit the complaint so that it is registered? And then, also, what is the paperwork, methodology to, to do something like that? Because, because if you had the whole thing set up, but you didn't have a way to enforce it, you'd really have a mess. I don't, I don't know that that's in there, it could be in there. Like I say, I only saw the review from the newspaper. Thank you.
My name is Dave Gramson. I'm a Manistee native, I've lived in Manistee my entire life, I'm retired. I purchased a home next door to me about three years ago, and I renovated it, and that was beginning of the short-term rental, and, so I ended up doing a short-term rental. And I made it pet-friendly, I had it for one year, and then I sold it, because the interest rates were going up, and I'm getting old, and I figured it was time to, to get rid of it. If I didn't do it then, it's going to be down the line. I no longer have a vested interest in short-term rentals. I don't have a dog in a fight, but I am for short-term rentals. I think Manistee needs it, I don't like to see things regulated, I like to see the market determine it. There's a house down the street that was a short-term rental, they're, they're selling it. Some people have the misconception that there's a lot of money in short-term rentals. Take it from me, there's not. The fees, everything, the taxes, and you also pay room tax, just like the hotels pay. And sometimes I get the reputation of a short-term rental, like, people that are coming in there are like gypsies. And that, that video was good, it said, you know, the people that come here from all different countries, they come to Manistee, they spend money, they go to the local businesses, and they're very impressed with Manistee coming through the Riverwalk. And the County of Manistee right now only has about 1,200 rooms that are members of the Visitor's Convention Bureau, and we all know what happens in July and August, whatever, fishing season, and if you're going to put a cap on the short-term rentals, you're going to take a lot of people that are not going to be available to stay here, just because the simple fact is, we don't have hotel rooms. I know we don't have housings, but then people don't talk about the lack of staying either. And some of the hotels aren't the greatest here, and probably the reason is, is because they don't have the competition, because there's not that many hotels, and that's what could happen with short-term rentals. You put a cap on short-term rentals, you're going to have less short-term rentals, and that's going to eliminate the competition, and hotels aren't going to be the great, or rental places aren't going to be the greatest, because they don't have to be, they're full. Hotels in Manistee are full, June, July, they don't have to be, all these standards. So, that's why I don't really like to see a, a cap on short-term rentals, and also, I think it's kind of unfair, I know other communities, Manistee's not Traverse City or Grand Haven, and put a cap on the riverfront, that kind of helps the long-term people that do vacation rentals, the big vacation rental companies. The mom-and-pop operation, they're going to get squeezed out, because they're going to get capped. And also, really, what isn't fair, is it had been previously discussed that the people that would sell their short-term rentals, build them up, get a good business, four or five years, the previous owners that buy it wouldn't be able to use it as a short-term rental, because they're not grandfathered in. Now, that's totally unfair. That takes the incentive away from investment, and bring investment into Manistee. The residential areas that are subject to vacation rentals that are going to be capped are the kind of the mom-and-pop operations, you know, person having a house, fixing it up, you know, inheriting it and making a short-term rental out of it, but with the season being short here, there isn't anything here to, to make that much money in the wintertime. You can talk to anybody, and they're going to say, you have a short-term rental, you're just lucky to pay your taxes, your insurance, your utilities, and a little bit in mortgage, and then some, you did well. But, at, ending this right here, I think that this is very important, I think the growth of Manistee is determined upon short-term rentals, it really is. And also, it's depending on investment in Manistee, because we have to have two things, we have to have investment in Manistee, to fix up these houses, there's houses being torn down in my neighborhood. I live on the corner of 4th and Hancock, and it's not the greatest part of town, but I fixed up a house, and I did well selling it, and then the other person did it, and they sold it as a short-term rental. Presently, it's not a short-term rental, so, but, but it's a nice house. So, all I can say is, it should take a lot of consideration, so, the planning commission, the city council, which I've been at a few city council meetings, and I've been researching it, really, this is a very important decision to stop and think about what's going to happen generations from now, because Frankfurt, they have a lot of short-term rentals allowed. Luddington, maybe not so much, but then look at all the hotels you have in Luddington. So, I think it's got to be a lot of thinking involved in what, what direction we're going to go, and help the investment and the growth of Manistee. Thank you.
Mr. Gramson, could we get your address, please?
290 4th Street.
Thank you.
Right on the corner of 4th and Hancock. Thank you.
Brian Chick, 276 First Avenue. I disagree with everything he just said, because this is a neighborhood, these are neighborhoods, I've lived in the same neighborhood for 66 years, and now we got daily rentals in there, and they've changed the way the neighborhood is. And you keep talking housing, about having more housing, they're taking housing away, and they keep about creating and putting money into the city. We've got hotels coming in, supposedly at the beginning of River Street, who are you going to have work at these hotels if they don't have any housing? And as far as it already is considered illegal to have them, how come the city is not doing nothing about it right now? You bought a program, you paid thousands of dollars for the program, and you're not using it. And so, to me, if you adopt this, it's going to get away, it's going to be a mess, it's going to be a total mess. And I think that you ought to look at it really hard, because I don't see anything about fines for the illegals on it, and they talked about some piddly fines before I was at the last meeting and everything. The fines should be very big, and he said that they don't make profits on them, well, I know one house, they made one hell of a good profit on it this last summer. So, he can say what he wants, and I'll say what I want. I'll tell you right now, if you do that, you're going to ruin Manistee. All up and down the shoreline, people are trying to get rid of them, they don't like them, people don't like the things. Nobody come into my neighborhood and ask me about it. If I want to build a garage and it's over the height, I got to come to you and get permission to build it over the top of the height, or buil, closer to the property line. They come in, it's daily rental. You know, oh, now they're going to have all these rules and that stuff. Well, I was in maintenance for almost 20 years, and I watched one of the daily, or the inspection of one of the rental houses, the guy was there about 15 minutes. If I could have did an inspection on all the stuff I had to take care of, all the heating, electrical and all that, in 15 minutes, they, it's a business, if they want to have it as a business, they have to have fire extinguishers, the fire department come in and check them, if they have a boiler, they got to have a boiler inspected, the wiring inspected, insurance companies come through and inspect the properties too, because it is a business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Abbling, I live at 280 4th Street. I moved to Manistee in the middle of 1990, it's a great place, it was kind of an undiscovered country, I bought a home here, I've been back and forth between Manistee and my other employment, sometimes overseas, sometimes in other states, but I did invest into real estate. I have a home here, I have rentals here, they're inspected every two or three years, and then Airbnbs came to Manistee. I turned maybe two or three of them into Airbnbs, and it was great. I look at the neighborhood right now, are the neighborhoods in chaos? Are they falling apart because we have short-term rentals in Manistee? I haven't seen that, I haven't heard news reports of police having problems with Airbnbs in Manistee. I've seen houses being fixed up. I see beautiful houses, I've seen old houses being fixed up, renovated, making neighborhoods very beautiful. Sure, if we want to have an ordinance, that's fine, we want to create a balance. I agree, let's have a balance. I didn't get to read everything, I just heard bits and pieces of some other things, like, we want to have Airbnbs only in this general area. Grand Haven video said, we're keeping them close to the water, we're keeping them close to downtown. Well, I'm thinking, what's not close to downtown in Manistee? Everything's close to downtown. We got the north side, which is close to the river, which is close to the town, it's a great place, and I've seen a lot of improvements in that area. In that video, they said, it's dark in the wintertime, these short-term rentals are dark. Well, I might want to point out that we need to increase, increase the definition of what a short-term rental is. Right now, from what I read, it was like, two to 28 days a short-term rental? We got to increase it. We got to increase it to three months, maybe maximum five, six months, because we have traveling nurses coming to town, we have construction workers. So, if they can only rent for 28 days, some are here longer, so when we say to them, they have to go to a hotel, this is where you need to live, everybody doing construction has to live in a hotel, well, there's probably not a kitchenette there. I never wanted to do a 9-to-5 job. I've traveled a lot, I've gone to school, I've become a teacher, I've taught a little bit, but most of the time, I've, I've made my own way by being self-employed, and one of those ways is real estate, buying houses and renting them. So, I don't have a pension when I get older, and, like I said, I haven't read everything, but would this new ordinance affect me and my future pension? Because that's the way I make my money, I'm not sure. We're doing a lot, a lot of improvements in Manistee. The first thing I saw was the boardwalk, you know, now we're talking about bike trails connecting different parts of Manistee. That's great, we're doing that for the residents. You know, what's going to happen is, people are going to find out what we're doing, they're going to want to come here, okay? It's only a matter of time, people are going to want to come here more and more and more, and I believe we need to offer them diversity of housing, not just a hotel. I think our neighborhoods around this area are great for the tourists, they love them. When I look at the comments, they love houses, they love where they can cook and have a barbecue and entertain their family, it's awesome. I don't think we need to restrict certain areas from people doing that. What else do I have? Yeah, I think the other comment is, maybe take a look at, do we need to have it inspected once a year? And we have a rental program here right now, I'm assuming that our inspections are making it safe for people to live in those houses. Do we need to make it doubly safe for tourists that come here? I'm not sure if we need a yearly inspection, but maybe we could tweak the inspection a little bit, just to make sure that it is safe. And the other big thing is, 28-day limit on short-term is too short. You know, we need to keep these houses going through the wintertime and provide more housing for residents, because that's just gonna, it's just going to stifle it. Our neighborhoods are finite, there are only so many houses. Is the population of Manistee increasing? Do we want more people to come here? Well, since our neighborhood is finite, that's not going to do it. We need to take a look and see, where else can we put more housing? What can we do? We need to invite investors to come into town, say, hey, I can build a hotel, I can build a motel right here, not a motel, I'm sorry, a residential building. They did it on the north side, they took the school down, and they built a nice place. So, we need to actively search out more places to house our residents, not just depend on current homeowners to take that slack. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tim Riley, I live at 346 10th Street. My wife and I own Boardwalk Vacation Rentals. We manage, I would say, close to 50 properties in and around Manistee, all the way up to Arcadia. I wasn't planning on speaking, I don't really have anything prepared, I'm happy to answer any questions, because we have a lot of experience, I've been doing this for 10 years, but there was one thing that was mentioned very early on, Ms. Waldo mentioned that short-term rentals aren't allowed currently in the city. The current rental ordinance, as it's written, specifically defines a dwelling as any house, room, or apartment, including those offered as short-term rentals, i.e. Airbnbs. It specifically... Airbnbs. It's specifically written in there and I would like the city to just clarify that because they are definitely legal. They're not illegal operations. They are defined in the current ordinance. So that's been something that's come up a few times. There's been a lot of misinformation out there and I want to make sure that's corrected. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Zarnicki. I live at four twenty-one East Fox Farm Road. I have a residence on three seventy-nine Ninth Street, which is, um, my deceased husband's parents' house that I'm utilizing as an Airbnb. According to the ordinance, the draft ordinance, short term rentals are commercial operations by nature. What would you call long term rentals? The draft ordinance further states the need to impose additional regulations beyond and in addition to the requirements for conventional, non-commercial, single-family domicile resident, residential uses. Well, the definition of domicile is a country that a person treats as their permanent home or lives in and has a substantial connection with. Well, I don't rent to foreigners or aliens, so I don't know. The article went on further to imply that short term rentals can also create significant problems regarding traffic, parking, congestion, litter, noise, and other similar issues. And according, according to that draft, well, our current hotels can do the same thing. I work at Manistee National. I see what some of those golfers do to the rooms or the golf carts when they're enjoying themselves. Um, and I would like to know, it's, it also goes to say, it further cites issues to fire and life safety and, uh, and well-being of the community. Has any study been conducted about these issues? Um, after five years of discussions regarding short term rentals, the planning commission must have dates of these issues to refer to. Any idea? Um, October one of twenty twenty-four, consideration of agreement with, um, Granicus, I believe it was, for short term rental data collection was approved at the cost of six thousand, or six thousand nine hundred and three dollars to identify, uh, addresses of short term rentals. Did that produce any data for you folks to look at? Um, annual registration with the city for short term rentals, it was talked about being yearly. Well, according to your rental inspection program, um, it's a three-year cycle for long term. Why? Why the difference? Um, okay, uh, Mr. Whitliffe wants to see a cap on short term rentals. There is also a proposed overlay for the district showing designated areas where short term rentals are acceptable and allowable. Will this rule also apply to long term rentals? Um, let's see, what else? Okay, Frankfurt. I see that by new business here, um, samples and ideas from other communities, specifically Frankfurt, was utilized. Well, I pulled in November, Muskegon short term rentals, Luddington short term rentals, um, Traverse Cities, Cadillacs, and Muskegans. Um, if you're comparing Frankfurt, Frankfurt has a total of a hundred and twenty short term rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Hendricks. I live at two ninety-two Fourth Street. I live in an area of town where the yards are very small. The houses are all built on half lots. Next door, next door to me is a short term rental. Our backyards connect only my, with my fence between us. Rental people almost always have a dog or several dogs. I don't dislike dogs, just the opposite. I would have one myself if my yard wasn't so small. Since the dogs are only here for a few days, they don't get a chance to know us or us them. Some of the dogs are well behaved, but not all. They constantly jump on my fence, growling and baring their teeth. I am not even comfortable in my own backyard. Apparently, the renters are instructed to clean up after their dogs and some of them seem to think that means picking up the dog droppings and tossing over the fence into my yard. If this was a long term rental or a permanent resident, we would most likely get to know our neighbors and this would not be an issue. It seems that the city should be more concerned with attracting permanent housing and attract new residents to our city instead of just catering to tourism. There are hotels and motels and cabins in the area and more are being built. Short term rentals should not be in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Todd Lloyd. I have a rental at five five six First Street. I've had it for about ten years. Um, I haven't ever had any issues or problems. The, uh, the one thing I've done is most, what I see with short term rentals is a big investment and a lot of improvement. We have to be in competition with the hotels and we have to be in competition, quite frankly, with each other. So I make sure mine is one of the nicer ones. I make sure I get it inspected. I'm, I, it's inspected all the time, every three years at least. Um, so I've never had an issue. I wasn't, I've got a couple of things I was going to speak about, but most, one of the things I wanted to speak about was this map has changed. That's the one that was posted on the announcement of this. The exempt areas.
It's, it's a new.
It's a new version?
Yes.
Okay, so that was done. Just, is that going to be the new overlay?
We're going to be discussing it. I'm going to be discussing it in a few minutes.
Based on that, I'd just like to make the one comment, you know, First Street, you know, I don't know if you know where that, where I'm at. I'm right across from the Armory, okay? Um, that is, that is, it is a residential area, but it is not a real neighborhood. Um, it is, uh, the traffic on First Street, sit, come sit in my living room once. And there is, uh, twenty cars a minute go by. Tonight, I actually did, did look when I was sitting there waiting to come here. There's, there's fifteen cars a minute on, on a Thursday afternoon. Can you imagine what it's like on a holiday weekend or even any given weekend? Um, I've got the boardwalk in my backyard, so I've got traffic back there. I've got traffic in the front. I've got boats going by in the backyard. So to make that not, not being in the exempt area, just doesn't make sense to me. Just like the video said, uh, the Grand Haven area, if it's close to water, I'm on the water. Um, I'm right on the channel and I, I can see Lake Michigan from my backyard and I can see First Street Beach from my front yard. So to, that's the one thing that I wanted to make a comment about. I need, I want to understand why my area was taken off of the exempt area. Um, a few other comments just about investment. Um, you know, we talked about bringing, I grew up here, you know, moved away ten years ago, invested in Manistee. I love this town. Um, you talk about bringing young people back. Uh, the people that rent my house are usually families. They bring their kids. Their kids get memories at First Street Beach. Their kids get memories fishing off the dock. Uh, their kids get memories watching, uh, you're coming to the Fourth of July festivities and things like that. It brings those people back. Hey, where do you want to live? Where do you want to live? In Grand Rapids or do you want to live in Manistee? You know, so it's, by having these rentals, it's a family type event. It's not a hotel that you just go into and you get one bed and you're up and down an elevator, in and out or whatever. It, it's a family event. Most of the time, I'll get, uh, two families, a husband, two husbands and two wives and four kids and they'll just enjoy themselves. Um, so it really brings those people here. Uh, uh, you can walk, right, you can walk to downtown. I hear comments, you know, we, I come a lot to Manistee. I hear comments from some of the restaurants who, with people that I know, uh, they say, hey, we had a big group of your people come in and eat at our restaurant and we had a people come down and I think we've got, uh, um, golf cart rentals now, right? Um, you know, those are the kind of people, they'll rent a golf cart and use it the whole weekend down at the, you know, down at, from my place or any of the rental places in town. So you bring those things here, you know, and you want to have a vacation or resort town, but you're not giving an, an opportunity for different type of people to come. There's a different clientele that wants to stay in a hotel, that wants to stay in a VRBO or a rental. It's, it's a, it's a, quite frankly, it's a, it's a family, more of a family type. I mean, who here hasn't gone to Florida or isn't going to Florida for a vacation? And most time, what do you do? You rent a VRBO. You know, that's what people are doing now. It, that's, because it's a family type environment. You're going to promote more family type atmosphere by having that. So those are just a few of the comments I wanted to make, you know, investment. You, we got to get these people here. Um, because once they come and enjoy Manistee, they want to come back and maybe they'll move here. Those young people want to move here. Um, but I do want to understand what changed on the overlay. That's one of the things that I'd like to understand. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight either. My name is Kathy Ebling. I live at four two nine Second Street, corner of Oak. So there's Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street. There's quite a few Airbnbs around there. We never noticed them at all. We never noticed them at all. There's one house across the street that it's really nice when they have families because it's all old people on Second Street, I'm telling you. And, um, it's nice to see kids out there and that we will even interact with them. And that's really nice. Now, if you want to live on Second Street in the corner of Oak and you have some neighbors behind you that are running a full-time bump and paint garage, then you have a complaint. And it took us seven or eight months to get those people out of there. I called everybody. I finally, the best relief I got, um, well, the rental company, they finally changed hands and got in it too, but the fire department. I had to call the fire department because they were running blowtorches and they had sparks going out and they had old trucks and cars and gas. Now, if you want to have, I couldn't, we could not have any parties in our yard last summer because it was so noisy and smelly from the chemicals. Now, that's a bad neighbor and we finally got rid of them. But, um, other than that, the Airbnbs have been not a problem. I would do my, one myself. I worked for Tim, who was up here speaking. And my goodness, in ten years, I think we've had one group of rowdy golfers who moved the bed over to cover throw up. And, um, I, one other little thing they did that they thought they could hide from us. But that was the only time that there's ever been any damage that I've worked for Tim for ten years. So I guess that's, they're not a problem with us and I think I live in a nice neighborhood and they're not a problem. Thank you.
Hello. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak because I do not own property in Manistee. I own property in Benzie County and I'm very interested, and I spend a lot of money here though, in Manistee County. But I'm very interested in this because we have a battle going on in Lake Township, which is Platte River Sleeping Bear Dunes. I would like to give the.
Who is it, Mark? Yeah, could we have your name?
Oh, yeah. My name is Jimmy Lee Haswell.
Address? Do you have an address?
Address.
Four zero one five Haswell Road, Honor, Michigan.
Okay. And you have a handout?
Yeah.
Um, that can go right to Theresa?
Right to me. And then I can give it to them after words. Thank you.
So, um, I'm sorry I'm late. I had to go to a bid way up in Benzie County and I really wanted to hear the housing report. But I'd like to read the article I just gave you is about Michigan Court of Appeals' rulings on residential uses short term rentals. Since two thousand and four, the Michigan Court of Appeals has repeatedly determined that short term rentals within Michigan communities that are subject to residential, business, and commercial restrictions are prohibited because they are commercial activities that are inconsistent with residential use. Notwithstanding this clear and consistent judicial record, property owners in communities with residential business and commercial restrictions who want to engage in short term rentals have continued to take their chances with Michigan courts, hoping that the facts in their particular case will result in a different outcome. As evidenced by two recent decisions, however, the Michigan Court of Appeals has declined to adopt a more favorable position that favors short term rental property owners and has continued to reiterate that short term rentals violate residential business and commercial restrictions. It goes on to give a definition of a residential house which be, a place which people are discussing here. I don't know if I can get my eye on it as fast enough. Um, but I'd like to say some other things because I only have five minutes. Um, for me, I think we have an obligation to decide how we want our community to be. I come from a family that homesteaded our land in eighteen ninety-five. As our neighbor says, it was owned by God, the American Indians, the United States government, and our family. Um, so, uh, for me, our community is the people that live here, people that move here, but people that live here. I recently had a discussion with a young woman who can only find a place to rent in Manistee for twelve hundred dollars, will be moving to the campground for the summer to live and hope that she can find some place to rent again in the fall. I think looking at our housing situation for people that live and work in Mason, Manistee, Benzie County, Leland already has a problem where the majority of their workers live outside the county because they can't afford to live in the county. Um, so this is a very serious concern. And then trying, having that picture for long term rentals, then deciding nuances of what's left if we're going to short term rental and where they should legally be. But we're kind of getting, and we're doing it in Benzie, getting the cart before the horse. Um, specifically also, I've seen restrictions in other places where the owners must live two hours, for example, from their property. We have people applying for land use permits that intend to build a short term rental place in Benzie County, um, that don't even live in the state. So we really have to ask ourselves, is all our property potentially going to be bought by people that don't live in the state or we even have someone outside the country? Who do we want to own our property here? You could wake up one day and everything, tourists are great, but do we even own anything left here? Um, it's great to have a, a contact person that's within two hours, but that doesn't mean the houses are not being bought by everyone else. Um, it also drives up SCV values, all kinds of things like that. So I think that's really important to get a grip on where our loyalty or mission is for people that live around here.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, good luck and we'll be, hopefully can work together with what you're doing. And there are other main cities in the state that, um, have banned or not allowed short term rentals at all. And I guess it's a good question to ask why. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, it's not short term rental. Is that okay?
It has to be on short term rentals. Short term rentals.
Just short term?
Yes.
At this point?
At this point.
There'll be an opportunity later.
Can I use the remainder of my five?
No. Good, good try.
Where you go?
Oh, Lord. I'm Kevin Kreebel. I live at five five two Bryant Avenue. I have had an Airbnb for 10 years. I also was the previous inspector here for about a year and a half, two years. So I've seen both sides of the coin when it comes to inspecting long-term rentals, renting short-term rentals. Short-term rentals by far are probably the most best taken care of, of housing stock we have in Manistee. I've looked at over 200 of them. The long terms are horrible. It's one of the reasons I stopped inspecting here. There's no enforcement. Um, there has to be some ramifications for landlords that don't take care of their homes, either short-term or long-term. There's nothing, there's no teeth to what we do here. For an inspector, it was constant going to court, writing tickets. But if the inspectors are not supported in the field with good ordinances and good fines to back it up, it's not going to change. Um, I have a little bit different aspect about looking at rentals. I believe that they should be not capped, but managed. And what I mean by that is I live in my house nine months out of the year. I think if you have a short-term rental, I know all my neighbors, I'm here most of the time. I only do it for a month or two to pay for the maintenance. My girl, my house, I call her my girl, was built in 1890. She needs a lot of lipstick. And it takes a lot of work to maintain that home. Um, but I think you should be able to live here. A lot of our short-term rentals, especially in the commercial areas, are out of staters. They don't care about Manistee like I love Manistee. They just don't. They're in for the dollar and that's it. Now, we have some great property managers in the area. Um, and we have some horrible ones. Like I said, I've seen both sides. So, um, and if you guys can't do anything tonight or do, I'm always willing to come in and work with you guys in a workshop. I've been a builder for 42 years. I'm currently a building inspector. I'm also a plan reviewer for the state of Michigan. So I have a little bit more background looking at this type of stuff. But I'm thinking the best way to control it is to keep people here that love Manistee and care about the community. All my neighbors know me and I say if there's ever a problem with my rental, you call me directly before it even gets to my property manager when I'm not in town. And that's a good way for me to handle it. I've had two bad experiences with my short-term, excuse me, with my rental. I rented it once long-term and they did over $8,000 of the damage in six months. My short-term, very little. I did have one person that was parking on my grass and put a tent in the front yard for extra people. I never rented to him again. Because I'm connected. And I think that's what we have to look at. Is how do we connect heart and soul of Manistee with what we're doing? So that you're not taking advantage of the community. And that's pretty much all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What's that?
Oh, one once.
Cover house.
Twice.
May I go ahead and go?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Your turn.
You want to have a time limit?
No, it says in your paperwork, I do not have a time limit. Sure. That's right. Correct.
All right.
So the first thing that I would like to read to you is from the Manistee City Police Department. This is from Chief of Police Joshua Glass. "March 13th, 2025, to Teresa Waldo, Zoning Administrator, Community Development Director, from Josh Glass, Chief of Police, regarding short-term rental incidents." Teresa, in response to your question regarding incidents at short-term rental requiring a police response, our officers indicated that the Manistee City Police Department has very few calls for services related to the known short-term rentals as compared to other categories resident in the city of Manistee. Most of these complaints are related to ordinance violation such as loud noise, firework complaints, or non-compliant fire pits, and are generally handed by educating the renters on this. When I spoke to the officers, including our code enforcement officer, they indicated we have significantly higher call volume for long-term rentals. Respectfully, Josh A. Glass.
Teresa, how long has that been? I mean, timeframe? Did you mention that?
He wrote this today for me.
No, no, I mean, is it the year?
The look back? Yeah, or a lot longer, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay.
So the next thing that I want to bring your attention to, if you have time to take a look at the map. This map that I brought tonight is different than the map that was in your packet. This map right here was suggested by the ordinance committee and a few other members that the discussion would be minimalizing it, minimalizing, can't say that, sorry, um, to this, to be the, um, short-term rental cap exemptions. So I wanted just to bring that to your attention, that they suggested that I print that off and bring that this evening for something more for you to, um, consider. The next in your packet, you all got this map right here. And this is currently the amount of short-term rentals with the Granicus software that we have of how many are in the north section, Maxwell Town, and then the, um, north and south. So that is in there also.
Registered short-term rentals, right?
No.
No?
Just a combination. At least we have quite a few that are not registered. And then also another document that you had in your paperwork, um, I just kind of want to go over and if you have any questions. So I brought up the short-term rental working document, um, about the possible fees if we were into implement that. You had one page that was possible of $250 a year for the rental, um, inspection. And I put it in there, what all the fees would cover for that $250. We also had some discussion that we would increase it to $500 a year. One thing I'd like you to all remind yourself is an average nightly short-term revenue in Manistee for one night is $240. So if you were to compare that to having an application, about one night or possibly two nights for the fees. So in that sheet, I put what the fees would cover, what the inspection process and overview would be, some regulatory and legislative contents. And that's all that I have for you. If you have any questions for me.
Any questions? How many are currently registered short-term rentals?
Teresa, do we have a exact number possibly?
I don't know. I'll hand.
Granicus, um, has not given us a number registered, but we have a total of 158 identified addresses. Um, and I can break that into what was the original non-capped area versus the, um, exempt area, if you're, if you want that.
I, I'd just be interested to see how many of the, of the number of actually registered with the city.
It's, it's very low at this point.
Do you say under 100?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, I, we might be able to go back and pull that.
I want to say estimate around 40. Yeah, that's it.
And how many do we have? 158?
158.
There's 158 total identified addresses that are-
Okay. And this was a snapshot?
Yeah, that's the most recent.
Okay. So in the summertime, it could potentially be significantly higher. Wasn't it over 500 at one time when we did a snapshot?
Well, it, we're just looking at the city now. The other figures that you were looking at in the past were a four nine six six zero address. So this is just the city that we're talking about. And yes, there will be an increase. And I think in the last, um, was it 30 days? There were two or three that were added.
Yep. Because they know that we have the discussion, so they've been asking to come in. Yeah.
Is there any questions on the fees by anyone?
So I did place in your packet, um, if you can find this page, this just simplified in a checklist for you of the things that we talked about at the last planning commission meeting. I'll scroll and find that up on the screen so we could share it with everyone. Those were some of the things that I wanted to talk about. So this is a recommendation to city council that we could adopt this regulatory ordinance with adding or excluding items off of this list that I have. So the last time that we had met, um, we had the registration requirements. And we wanted that annual basis of registration in January. That's something you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, we discussed, what, January 1st to the end of the month?
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, what was the purpose or rationale for short-term rentals having an annual registration versus long-term being inspected every three years?
Some of the things that the building official and I had talked about are sometimes they change hands. Um, they're used quite a bit often. You have different people in and out. And also to try to catch all of those and to have them be done annually. Um, you know, that's something you guys could change. You could, I mean, it's all up to you if you'd like it to be on a cycle, just like long-term rentals are. Um, the other thing is yearly, it's I guess a little bit higher expectation and maybe you wouldn't have to chase them. It's very hard to get all of them in one year and accomplish when you still have some that are lingering out there. Um, but again, I mean, that's up to you guys.
At one time, we discussed where you would have an annual inspection if you had issues. Otherwise, you was, you would go back onto a three-year cycle. So you would start off with your initial inspection. If you got a, a gold star, then we would put you into a three-year cycle unless there were complaints or something that would bring attention to us.
Yep.
That there was an issue with that property. Or again, it makes sense, if you have a change of ownership, then they would need to have a, a follow-on inspection, just kind of what we already addressed, I think in one of the, the chapters about the change of ownership having to come and reapply.
Yep.
For, so at that point, they would start over. So you wouldn't have necessarily worry about a follow-on inspection because we've already covered that they have to come in, uh, if there's a, a new owner.
So it's, I don't know how many of my fellow commissioners have experience, um, utilizing short-term rentals. They're, they're almost exclusively the way that I travel. And in my experience, a couple of people mentioned this, they're, they're maintained much better than any long-term rental I've seen. Um, generally speaking, because if you rent them through an app, they're sort of self-policing. You get a status as a super host or a super guest or, you know, people tell on you if you've done bad things and you don't get to rent again. I like that aspect of sort of the self-policing. Um, and a lot of these are covered. So I have a general concern that there are additional standards placed on short-term rentals that don't exist for long-term rentals, knowing the difficulties we've had policing long-term rentals in this city. So I, I'm a big proponent of a longer look back. Again, like you said, I, you know, I like the idea of if there are things that need to be addressed right away, you have a second inspection and you do that in a short term, however. There, there are, there are so many different ways to keep tabs on owners because they have to, they have to advertise. These are businesses. They're, you can drive by them. You can talk to the neighbors. I mean, they're, it's a small town. We, everybody knows everybody's business around here. They're, um, so I'm a big advocate of longer term, three years. I, I, again, I don't want to put any additional burden that doesn't exist for other rentals. That's my opinion.
Question? Any other? Um, I, I, you know, some of the people commented about having teeth. And, and with anything like this in any business, the only teeth comes from dollars. Uh, it's, it's not necessarily bringing people to court. It's being able to give them a citation with a, a significant dollar amount that would make them say, wow, that's, that's painful. Uh, and, and I think that's probably helpful as well. Um, and, and I'm not talking about so much noise violations as I am with not registering, not following the, the established codes to become a vacation rental. And like I said, we know that we have at least 100 out there. Uh, and like I said, literally, they are, it, it's a double whammy. They're, they're not complying with city requirements for any kind of a rental. And they're, all vacation rentals are not in compliance with, uh, state regulations unless we amend, uh, residential areas to allow for them in particular.
Teresa and Mark, is this the proper place to ask specific questions about some of these sections? Are we doing that offline?
It would be, I guess, wouldn't it? Or, or is that in the, in-
Nope, we can go for it.
The old business.
Um, but I just have a few things that I put notes on. So section 10 dash 244.
Teresa, do you have yours printed up here?
I, sorry, I just don't have it printed.
No worries. Um, I, I can read it. It's, it's states about no fireworks shall be used on or from a short-term rental property.
Okay.
For this, blah, blah, blah. Um, I believe that that is already law within the city limits. So does it, does it need to be a redundant and statement or?
And again, this was put together by the attorney. That's what he recommended, that it be in there. So I would say-
I would, I would say it needs to be in there.
As a gentle reminder?
Just as a gentle reminder for people who are from out of town.
Yes. And then section H, attic and basement, I have a question about this. I'm just curious. No bed, no bedroom in an attic or basement shall be used for occupancy or sleeping in a short-term rental. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah. It's, I, I can answer that. Um, it has, it, it has to meet fire code. So if you, if it's, if it is a furnished attic and you have a fire exit, if you have a, an e, a standard egress, if your basement has a standard egress out or a vacation window, then it is considered a bedroom. But a standard basement or attic is not-
Got it. Okay.
Considered a livable space.
Okay. So if it can be determined a bedroom. Okay. Um, no special events. I have a really, really hard time with this. People, um, and there was a gentleman that talked about it and things, you know, I, my family does not live here. So because I have a big family, I rent short-term rentals when I go and visit family. We might have a birthday party. We might have a backyard, backyard barbecue. We might- This is very broad and overstating, saying no outdoor events, no special events. Um, I don't like this at all. We don't tell people who live in their own homes- I don't like this at all. We don't tell people who live in their own homes that they can't have a few people gathering in a backyard. So, you know, again, there are things, there are noise ordinances, there are parking ordinances. I think there are other things that would encompass taking care of this by, instead of saying in a beach town with a beautiful summer, sorry, you can't enjoy the outdoors.
Well, we'd need to know, I'd have to look up what the exact definition would be for special events.
Right, and, and narrow it down, no public, no public or paid events, something to.
Cause this includes.
Make it so it's not a block party kind of event.
This includes the language group events, weddings or similar events. We're right on the beach. There are houses that are available on the beach. You can't have a small wedding. Well, the concert might, I might, I'll give on the concert. Don't have a concert in your yard. Unless I really like it. No non-permanent fireplaces or fire pits. You know, again, I think there are ordinances that take care of this unless it's just one of those things that.
I think they're just kind of.
But to say none at all, if that's not the way that the other ordinances read, I think it should mirror any city ordinance.
That's, you know, with the, I mean, I'll pick on the fire pits. It's legal in the city to have a fire pit. And you have to be fifteen feet away from a structure, so.
But I think it said not, didn't the word say?
It says none.
Non-permanent.
Non-permanent, no non-permanent fireplaces or fire pits. So meaning like a solo stove. You can't bring one of those. Is that what that means?
Well, or, yeah, or just build a fire out in the middle of the backyard.
But my fire pit that I have is not permanent. It is, it's, it's a normal.
Yeah, I think most.
Like a chimney or someplace.
That I can move around to save my yard, but it's not permanent.
Um.
So I, that's, that's a little.
I think maybe that could be addressed by it has to meet the existing fire requirements for a fire pit and then maybe just list that. So it's in compliance with what we already have rather than a new.
You have the fire department, when they register, if they're going to have a fire pit, have them, have the fire department go look at it?
Yep.
Yeah, and I just.
On the checklist.
I don't like a different set of rules. I mean, it's, it's hard enough for the police to keep up with the rules that we have, let alone a whole different set for a new group of people. And other concern I have, and this is, I, I know it was brought up. The million-dollar liability. What's the requirement for long-term? And how, because it's referenced in this, how does this increase safety? I don't understand the, the point behind it. I agree with having to carry liability insurance, but I don't. I'm questioning the million-dollar.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's for the owner. I mean, if something happens to the house, they're not carrying the proper amount of insurance? Which I.
All for an insurance requirement.
And that's again, something that the attorney advised us to put in there.
And then my last question. Because I remember when home sharing began. And it started with people who had extra room in their house, opening up their own home to let people come and stay. And I think that was in the video too. In letter R, under duty to remedy violations on page ten, if I'm reading this correctly, says no room rentals. In no event shall an individual room in a dwelling unit or less than the full dwelling be rented for STR activity. I, I know that there are quite a few short-term rentals that are literally just a room, bedroom upstairs. I also have a concern, well, I have a concern with no room rentals. And then secondarily, which I assume why this wasn't included, would be is if, if a room rental were included, then I think some of the qualifications would need to be lessened. Fine, fees, that kind of thing, if it is just a room that they're sharing to make.
I thought we had addressed that at one time where we were exempting the, if it was just a room in your home versus a short-term rental.
I thought so too, so when I.
Discuss it.
Yeah.
And all that was provided to the attorney.
Okay, that it would fall under a separate.
Right, but we can go back and have that him address these issues that you're talking about.
And I'm happy to follow up with an email with, give you more information on where exactly I saw it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good question, Shelley. Anyone else? Nick? Anything else?
Nope.
Pam?
Just as an, as an overview. I, I get the impression from a lot of the townspeople that we're trying to end short-term rentals completely, and that's not true.
Correct.
Just want to, everybody says, you know, they might come back and want to buy a house. Well, there's no houses to buy because they're being turned into short-term rentals. And my concern, I, I don't have a problem with having short-term rentals. I would like to see them capped. But I also would like to have some of the houses that go on the market go toward people who want to live here year-round and send their kids to school year-round and work year-rear, year-round instead of being bought by people out of town and turned into short-term rentals for four months out of the year, and then they're sitting there empty for the rest of the year. Or they will rent them out for those eight months left in the year and then kick the people out when summertime comes, because I know that happened to someone, a couple of people that I know.
There are reasons people don't do that.
We're just trying to maintain what everybody loves about this town, which everybody says is the community. If we get too many short-term rentals in this town, we won't have that community left. We're destroying what we all love about it. We're just trying to get a happy medium here. Nobody's trying to take away any extra income from anybody. We just want it regulated. I know people hate that word, regulated, but we're just trying to make it safe for everybody and to, and to keep that community that everybody loves so much about Minnesota.
I know in my industry, and I've heard from teachers and education, we have had an extraordinary time recruiting salaried and exempted positions because people can't find housing within forty-five minutes. So I, I get, I mirror what Pam is saying. You know, the, this side is saying, don't regulate homeowners. However, increasingly, these homes are being bought up by corporations and LLCs and people out of state. And, and if it were me and I had a huge investment opportunity, I would definitely be investing in one of the most pristine beaches in western Michigan. But I have grown children. I'd like them to stay here. And the opportunity, I, I would be very curious, and I don't know if Tracy has this information. Since COVID, where people's work life changed, where they could work, they could work from home. They're much more mobile and remote work. While we've had additional units being built, they, they tend to be multi-family units, how much have rents increased in that five years? That's another thing that goes hand in hand with short-term rentals or the, the unregulated limit or cap on short-term rentals. I'm a big advocate of short-term rentals, but like everybody else here, we have a finite housing stock and we don't have builders knocking down our doors to come in and build. So we do want to entice people to come here. We want them to stay. We want them to enjoy all of the things that we love about living here. But we're pricing people out of the market as, as the short-term rentals are helping to push up, there are lots of factors. I'm not saying it's the only one. Push up the rents to where people are having to double up families to rent homes and they can't find things. So we do, we have to find a balance and we had that several years ago. And this is one piece of it, but it's one piece of it that we can put to bed with some very sensible regulations. We don't want to take people's income away.
Marlene?
Addressing the people that have a short-term rentals and they, we put the cap of, what is it, twenty-eight days or something is the limit? Well, that's just exactly what it is, a short-term rental. And if you feel you have to have more months and months, then you're not a short-term rental. I, I, I like to see a cap on, you know, and on that because if, if you need to have more months and stuff, then you need to be a regular rental instead of a short-term rental.
Currently, we're just encouraging anybody who has any type of rental, just call up Jerry, get it registered. It's all we care about right now until we get this ironed out. Just call us up. He can come out and inspect it. Do that.
Make sure they're safe, safety.
Oh, personally, I'm ready to put it to bed. We've talked enough about it. Whatever you want to put the numbers on, I'd say put a cap on it if we have to and see how it goes. If it doesn't work, we'll take the cap off. I mean, this is nothing, you know, we're not making rocket science here. We don't have anything on the books now. At least we'll have something on the books. As far as complaint goes.
Pyramids.
I'll say what?
It took less time to build the pyramids.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you know, we've discussed it how many times we sent to the council, council sends it back to us, so we're sitting on it again. So whatever the consensus is of the group, we'll put the numbers in and ship it out.
So what the goal is, is we need to get something together.
Right.
That I can bring to council and say, the planning commission suggests this.
Yes.
Have it outlined exactly what it is, have them take a look at it, review it, and if they accept it or deny it. So that's what we have to get to. We have to get to that nitty-gritty of these things that are listed there and anything else that you want to do.
I have one more comment.
Sure.
And the majority of us have been working on some kind of a short-term rental ordinance for the last six years. And this is not anything new. We, we've sent two to city council that they've turned down. This will be the third. But we've done our due diligence. We worked months and months and months. We've looked at, at all the other towns around and what they're doing. This isn't some hurry-up idea that we've been working on. We've liter, most of us here have been working on it for six years.
So I, I do have a question. What, what is city council's position? What, why have they turned these down in the past?
Well, first, I've only been here a year and a half. It was brought up to me about, I don't know, nine months ago. I knew the back history a little bit, but I wasn't here. Also, it was brought to me, hey, was by city council about, you know, several months ago. Let's talk about this. Bring it here first, let you guys kind of do the hard work. But I think with new council members, I have no idea now. The input that we are getting is like a little bit of a change here. And some other information that I've been sharing is from the ordinance committee and that has some council members on it. So I think just with that, but I honestly don't know.
Well, in the past, we've had, over the past, what, six years? We've been working on it. We've had several different.
I'm not sure I understand.
True.
So we've, we've gone through three, three or four, and things kind of drop off as a new one comes in and everybody gets used to everybody.
And new council members.
And new council members and new planning commission members, even though this committee itself has been pretty stable the past six years. So now we have you and we have stability. We can move forward.
Next Tuesday.
Can we put something together for her to present by next Tuesday?
Well, that's what we'll.
I'll send you my list tomorrow.
The agenda for city council's already been given out because they have two a week in advance, so that's already been done. But I intend to leave on the schedule, I believe, two weeks from next Tuesday. Only if we had something prepared and ready.
I do like to point that one gentleman brought up is on the short-term rentals that is twenty-eight days. And I don't know, increasing it to three months, ninety days. And that's still, to me, it's still considered a short-term rental because most long-term rentals are probably a year.
A year.
So it's still considered a short-term rental.
I think you're getting into month-to-month when you go, when you're getting to that.
Yeah.
When you're getting to the three months, six months, it's actually a month-to-month rental though, because.
Well, if, if a teacher is here or somebody working.
Like you said, nurses, travel nurses.
Travel nurses, yeah.
And, and there was a, I know of one short-term rental that does, that was catering to the, the traveling nurses.
There were some at Jocelyn Cove.
I, I know of one on.
And they can adjust their rents for those clientele, so, just like they do in the wintertime for teachers.
Yeah.
And Teresa, on the, let's just say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, on this form that you have up, capping three percent of housing stock, what is the number of housing stock? I know that's gone back and forth and even tonight it has.
Two thousand nine, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight households from the census of July of twenty twenty-three.
Is a household a, a house?
That's my question, is a household a house? Because you can have a household and that those, those homeowners would own more than one house, but it would still be the same household.
So I thought we had.
Sorry, Trace.
I thought we had in, in the city, three thousand eight hundred at one time.
We did, but this is the, the more recent.
What is that number again?
Twenty-seven ninety-eight, that was the last census.
So that's only eighty.
So twenty-eight hundred.
So I can find out the definition as you're asking. Have that clarified?
I think it was, it was stated at that time, houses. Now.
I don't think a thousand structures have disappeared, but.
I mean, we've been knocking some houses down, but that's.
Not that many.
No, it wa, it wasn't a thousand. It, it was like three, three thousand, I have the number in my old notes. But that's from maybe a year, almost a year ago. Well, no, the census information was older than that.
It's been a couple of years maybe, but I, that number just sticks out.
I did want to make sure for short-term rentals, the, the defin.
I've just settled out.
Okay.
The discussion that you were having about short-term rentals and the twenty-eight days, that, that's just that definition. It doesn't mean that you can't have those month-to-month rental or a seasonal rental. That's fine. It's just not categorized under a short-term rental, if that makes sense.
If you want to rent for less than thirty days, you have to be a short-term.
Term rental. Okay, so I do think the checklist that we have here, and we can, I talked to the attorney about some of the other things that were suggested, but I do think we, if we could talk about a fee and decide on a fee, and if you want to do percentage cap versus a number cap. Help us move forward.
Now, when we talk pers, the cap, we're not, that's in excess of the already exempted homes.
Correct.
Which is the majority of our short-term rental stock, if I'm not mistaken. According to the little circles that you had on your map.
So that percentage is outside of that district?
Yes, they're, they're close though.
But the cap would, would not include the exempted areas. It would only include those areas not in the exempt, correct?
It would only include areas not in the exempt area.
What are you looking for?
Yes.
They'd be able to see it from the back, but.
She should have a small one she could put up on the screen.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
That does make sense.
Yeah. Well, Marco, if I could, or.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, you were looking for a fee to start with. Well, let's say we start off with five hundred dollars. Okay? Pick a number, put it down and see if it worked. If it don't work, we can always lower. So we gotta start somewhere.
Found the line.
I like this.
I mean.
Okay. We'll suggest that. Okay. Well, suggest that.
Marlene?
I like 250 that we are. And then, I don't know if it's five years we have now, but to go like to three, two or three years inspection.
Okay.
Pam?
I'm kind of leaning toward the 250, but I'd like to have a two-year inspection instead of usually, just because the turnover rate with the people going in and out of there is much more than for the long-term rentals. How much?
I would say the $250. Just because, again, it's, we want to make sure that it's enough to cover the city's costs, because they're also going to be contributing to the city through the tax, the room tax. Which is also part of this process, right? So let's not, let's not
And it gets up to
be too greedy. Let's
Is 250 going to cover the cost of the registration?
A year.
A year.
Yeah, 250 a year will cover the cost of registration, correct?
Okay.
And then they're paying a room tax on top of that to the travel, to the visitors' bureau.
Ken?
Well, I know Luddington has a $500 fee, but it covers for three years.
Yep.
But that was kind of an interesting one that we really haven't had a chance to discuss.
I like the 750 for three years. I
It's 250 a year or something.
Right. Yes.
And then I guess I'm at 250 then, and then I kind of agree with the two-year inspection instead of every, every year.
You got the deer in the headlights look.
Yeah.
Nobody said anything about two years.
I would like to see 500. I want to make sure that the city covers all the costs, that we're not running into the red. And maybe, well, if we do two, if we do two years, it's 250 bucks. So that kind of makes sense, eh?
Well, I mean, if that's going to cover
But if the registration is 250 a year, then if you're registering for three years, you would pay 750.
Or 250. Knock it down per year.
Same thing.
Yeah. But I don't know. When this, when we first started, I was at 750, but that may be a smidgen too high. I would stay at 500, but go with what the commissioners would like. So the consensus on this is?
250.
A year.
A year.
Okay.
250 a year.
I'll change my mind. A year.
Okay.
If it's going to cover our costs.
So you're saying 250 a year, but do you want the inspections to be two or three years?
Initial inspection.
First year, yes.
And then an inspection if there is a sale of the home. Otherwise, as long as they pass all their criteria, then we can put them on a three-year inspection cycle.
Okay.
That sounds good. That's what I would like to see.
Okay, okay.
All right.
So the next we need to do, we need to talk about the cap.
Cap.
Are we going to do a percentage of the housing stock? Or are we just going to come up with a number? We had talked about 30. We had talked about 50.
I would prefer to see a percentage.
Percentage.
That way it covers growth or shrinkage.
Okay.
And this is what they're suggesting here, 3%, that's outside of that area, right? Or does it include that?
Yes, yes, okay.
It's outside of that area.
I like that proposition, the 3% outside of that area.
That area, correct. Okay.
What did you say, Shaw? 3%?
3% outside of the cap area. So 3% of the neighborhoods, you still retain community. It's a good number of households, the 27.
I'd go for that.
Yeah.
I mean, we can run it up to 3,000. That would be 90 outside the cap, which I can live with 90 outside the cap.
And that would literally cover everyone that's currently doing business today.
That's a 3% plus.
That's my hope.
At 3%.
Okay.
Because, again, most of the real popular vacation rentals are already in the excluded areas.
Right.
I know what we talked about last time was 5%, but 3%.
Well, I was rounding that.
Household number three to 3,000.
All right. Okay, so
Gives us an even number of 90.
90. Okay.
But I still like the 3% because it gives us opportunity to grow. So if we get another 2, 3, 4,000 homes, then there's more opportunities for big
Yeah, hard, aren't you?
Yeah.
Ken, what do you think?
I build them one a year. Ken, I'm fine with that.
3%?
I mean, I've got three from... Where do the bed and breakses fit in on this? Or is that a totally separate animal? Okay.
That's a special use for it, and that comes to us.
That's right.
Because from my front yard, I can see three short-term rentals, but I also have two bed and breakses that I can see from my front yard.
I have that, too.
I can live with three in my, from my front yard, so.
Shelley, you're good with 3%?
Yep.
Marlene?
Yes.
Roger?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You are good.
So everything else on that list, were we in agreement of? The other, just kind of, it's what we had talked about last time. So all I did was simplify it, put it on that sheet.
It would be, just to go back to the lawyer about the billion
Yeah. Yep.
Compared to what we require for, you know, a a normal rental.
Sure. So I have that and definition of special events, just kind of the city ordinances about the fire pits, those type of things. So, so do you think we can at least possibly make a motion for the things that we, that are listed here, and then our answer of 250 for a year, for three years, do the percentage? Can we close the meeting and?
Well, one more question.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
One more question.
Yep.
Fines. Do we have a schedule of fine?
Non-compliance.
Non-compliance.
Yes.
I didn't see it in the
I didn't see it either.
I think the fines are with the, same exact, same fines as the long-term rental. Weren't they in the fines, the fees, the schedule of fees?
I don't remember that, but we have on a separate administrative guide to address that. But if, there were some fees within the ordinance, I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, but not fine.
There was an additional
I would, I would just, I would like to know, I mean, is it going to be, how are we going to do the fines?
Well, I think that's, that would be part of that administrative piece, but Teresa's bringing up the actual
And hopefully, we never have to administer fines.
Correct.
That would be a perfect
Yeah, I didn't see those. I didn't see
I didn't see the fines listed, and that's why I asked earlier.
I think we had them last. I would hope they would have some teeth.
And an increasing number.
I don't know how you guys talked about All right, let's see. We've got that, findings, definitions. I think it talked about that a long time ago. Yeah, because I know somebody who rents out.
I do, too.
It's probably the same person.
Yep. Go ahead.
So what would you like to see for fines? So if someone fails to register and operates a short-term rental, what, what would you like to see?
Teresa, do you have any guidance on that from any other jurisdiction you've been in or?
Typically, some of the surrounding areas have doubled whatever the original permit fee was.
I don't think that's, that's not enough.
You don't think so?
No, I think it is enough. I think it is, but especially if it escalates. And that, you know, the first fine might be, if we're doing 250, then it would be 500 the first one. The next violation would be even more than that, and the next
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep.
Yeah, I like that.
So other types of fines that you were talking about, was it in relationship to maybe some other violations that occur?
Well, public violations, I mean, do we?
I wouldn't, you know, that's kind of going down the rabbit hole, don't you think? I think the real key is to get them into the inspection program, get them registered, and then everything outside of that falls into the jurisdiction of the housing inspector or the police and the fire.
That's fine.
Don't you think?
And we have a schedule for a lot of things.
Yeah, I don't want it to be a bureaucratic thing on the planning
No, if you stay at a hotel and you get a noise ordinance, it doesn't escalate because you're at a hotel. It's whatever the city says.
All right, that's fine. And just the registration.
Okay.
I have one question, just to clarify. A gentleman spoke that he lived on First Street or had a house on First Street that he rents out, and that was taken off the exempt list, which was on the map that I had seen earlier. So I would kind of like to, I think, put that back on.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't actually had to look at the map.
That whole strip on the channel there.
It's right on the water. It's another one.
So, so this was suggested
They're looking at the map to second hand. Is out of the area.
And this is the DDA area, and then, and then here, is this going to be the actual waterfront?
So, but these three areas are also
Yeah, they took that off.
Yeah, they took it off.
I know what else it is.
There's two right there. There's two right there.
Why would you say it's okay here and it's okay here, but
The ones that are toward the harbor.
I think what they were thinking is this is residential.
A lot better today than you did yesterday. And they sounded a lot better.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, they would have to be, they would have to be part of this.
I'm sorry, Ken, did I answer your question then, or did you?
Yeah, no, you did. Regardless, I think it just makes sense.
Of course, why would you exempt, let the water go and all the others, and why, and they're right on the riverwalk with access for to the riverwalk.
Do you want these returned?
I need to close the meeting and Someone needs to go through all of these. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that differentiation between may not rent a room, that
Oh, that's right, that, too.
Yeah, and whole house. I think the general consensus, and correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, is that we thought that the room sharing, house sharing, was going to be exempted from this as a short-term rental entirely. If somebody occasionally rents a room in their house, I think that's on them. If it's their primary residence, they're not moving, they're not moving out, they're staying there. I don't think that should be part of this. But to say, to specifically exempt it, say you cannot rent a room, I personally do not like that language.
I agree with her. And we had talked about that. If you're living in the house, there's, I don't see any difference from Airbnbs and then that, because Airbnb's, most of the homeowners are, there's somebody living in that house with them. I don't see the difference.
Okay.
Do you'd like to see these back on?
Yeah.
Back on the map?
That strip on First Street.
Yeah.
You want to see those on First Street, back on the
They want?
They want to know if we want the First Street house.
First Street back on?
Back on, yeah.
What was the reason for taking it off today?
So do we want to make a motion?
It wasn't in the area.
I do.
Well, yeah, actually, I'd say, yeah. Whoever gets it going.
Be ready to make a motion? Okay. So Teresa, do you want a motion?
You have to close the meeting and then make a motion.
Okay.
How about hearing?
We'll close portion of the public hearing. It's 9:05. Long.
Now you want the motion.
And then we can have a motion, right? Make a motion
Yeah.
on accepting short-term rental
Chapter 868, right?
Checklist
With the provision.
With changes and additions. Is that the way you want it worded?
Yeah, and then we need a list of the changes.
Okay.
Just to restate them.
Just to restate them.
Okay. So do you want to restate them?
Yeah, can you wrote them down?
Yeah, you wrote them down.
Who wrote them down?
Hey, Tracy, you're going to have to help me with these.
I have some, too.
I have them written down if you don't.
Okay, go for it then, Shelley.
Okay, so you make the motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the ordinance as proposed with the following modifications. Definition on no special events. And again, I strongly advise against having it be materially different than hotels or long-term rentals or any of the other language. No non-permanent fireplaces, do we? Yes. The insurance, again, mirror the dollar amount for any long-term rental. Don't understand where the million-dollar minimum came from. Exclude or strike entirely that no-room rentals are under 10244. I think that's all I had written down.
And then the change on the
Oh.
On the fee.
The $250 per year, 750 for three years.
Riverside of First Street.
Include, yep, the First Street, water side, riverside, back in the cap, and to accept the listed
List here.
Page.
Yep.
With the 3% cap on the housing stock outside of that area in the registration fee, the rental, the inspection rental, or the inspection once every three years after the first year, if there are no violations. Registration required, yes. I believe, that's it. That's everything. Okay. Good.
Need a second?
Did she say that the fees?
Is everybody good with that?
The 500 and up.
Second by Marlene. Further discussion?
The fines, the fees?
Fines, yes.
The fines initially, the first violation is double the registration fee. Okay. And then for every subsequent violation, double that.
Double that.
Okay.
That gives you incentive.
There's a lot of, a lot of towns do that. Do they do that percentage?
So we have the motion by Shelley with
Marlene second.
With Marlene second. Any further discussion? None? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Shemansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpice?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes. Thank you. All right. That takes in consideration 868 then, correct? Or do we reopen it? Second part of the public hearing? Or do we reopen?
Oh, yeah, you have to reopen the meeting, yes.
All right. So second part of the public hearing, we're going to reopen at 9:10 PM on purpose to consider new chapter 868, short-term rentals and amendments to chapter 1482, residential rental properties in the City of Manistee code ordinances. residential rental properties in the city of Manistee code ordinances.
Ready for new business?
Pardon?
Ready for new business? All right, so our new business is the special use permit application for parcel number five one dash seven four eight dash seven one three dash zero one. The address is one five six eight street. And I do have the guest here, if you don't mind coming up and just giving us an example of what you'd like to do for your special use.
Good evening, my name's Trevor Johnson, I'm here representing Manistee Combat Academy, which is the new proposed business. It's the old SERF Pro building down on Eighth Street. I moved back to Manistee after being gone for twenty-two years, three years ago. I've got three kids, seven, nine, and a senior at the high school, and have noticed that Manistee really has a lack for youth sports in general, let alone combat sports and martial arts. My daughter wrestles on the Manistee wrestling team. And, and I've helped a lot over the last three years at the school with that program. And just watching, you know, kids struggle at the middle school and high school level because they haven't had the youth sports to bring them up like some of the other kids have. So, yeah, essentially what I'm trying to do is open a gym that provides Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, a youth wrestling program, as well as bring back the Manistee Boxing Club. Manistee Boxing Club was something, you know, that was a big part of this community for a long time. It started in nineteen seventy-six, it was actually in the basement of the Ramsdale Theater. And a, a lot of people, including myself, went through that program and trained under Mr. Gillian. It was a free program for the kids of the city of Manistee, always. We intend to do the exact same thing. Try to get kids into the gym and, and give them a, an outlet and a place to, you know, kind of do something new and different than what they're used to. That's about all I got.
So, when he came to present the application to me, I found out first that the location was at General Industrial. So with that, we went over the permitted uses, didn't see that that was a permitted use. It was classified under special use. He did pay the thousand dollars fee, that's been done. And so now he's here to represent, to find out if he is able to go ahead and do that.
Did you buy the building?
I did not, no. It's been for sale for, you know, the last few years. I got with the owners of the building, kind of told them what I was looking to do, and, and rented the building. With the hopes of, you know, expanding, it, it's a rather large building. It's, you know, a lot bigger than what we need initially, but, you know, we have thoughts of pick-a-ball inside in the future, or maybe batting cages, or, you know. So, the landlord is really willing to work with us, whether it be rent or purchase in the future.
It is a, it is a nice building, a big building.
Yeah, that's true. Ilch Chief's garage. Do we have anything like this now? Do you have an, an operation?
So, when I, when I lived in California, I owned a mixed martial arts gym. So I have a lot of experience in this. I fought myself, both amateur and professionally, I've traveled the world for fighting. I managed a ton of boxers, UFC fighters, Bellator fighters. So it's something I'm super passionate about. So, yeah, I have a, a long history in martial arts and combat sports, as well as owning a business, but not here in this area.
I think it's a great idea, personally.
I think it's a good idea.
I applaud you for taking the time, and I know your daughter is a very good wrestler, so.
Thank you.
My son was a wrestler, so was I. No, it's a, you know, I was wondering who was going to use that building? It's been sitting there for some time, empty.
Yeah. And honestly.
God bless you for doing this.
I didn't know that, you know, that it didn't fit the, per se, the zoning, and looking in Manistee for a building that fits the description, there isn't much, you know, that has a nice wide-open floor plan that you can be loud at. So it was a struggle to find a place, and that was what we came up with.
We are kind of building for here. But, yeah, I mean, for youth, get people away from, kids away from games and phones and everything.
Yeah, they need some more action.
Yeah.
Will you be holding, you, or will you be holding tournaments or anything like that there?
No, not at all, it'll be structured classes. Most of the classes are actually in the evening, you know, the after-school program for boxing, doors open at three o'clock. The Jiu-Jitsu program for, uh, both kids and, and adults are, as well, start at five PM. So, three PM till about eight thirty is, is what you're looking at for the busiest times of the gym.
I, I, I like it, like it a lot.
Me too.
Thank you for coming back to Manistee.
Thank you for.
Need to do anything formal?
Yep, make a motion if you're going to pass it, or?
We have public hearing on this too?
No.
No?
No.
Just special use.
Yep, just special use to go ahead and pass.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I'll second, I'll make a motion.
There's all kinds of motions.
Yeah, all kinds of.
We have a motion to approve. By Shelley or Roger?
Shelley, Shelley.
Shelley, okay, second?
I'll second.
Nick?
Or Roger, let Roger second.
Okay, Roger, you going to second it?
Okay.
All right, very good, everything's back on my left side. Okay? Any discussion?
I can't place that building.
Congratulations.
Way down at the end.
It's, you know where the bird feeder restaurant was at one time? Right across the street.
Oh, okay.
To the north, I guess it would be.
All right.
Yeah.
Chief's garage. Yeah.
Yeah. So you have a nice rental right across the street, I mean, Tim Morley has fixed that up, so.
I've seen it.
Things are kind of moving in the right direction in that area.
Yep.
So. No further discussion? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Shmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpice?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes. Motion approved, congratulations.
Thank you guys very much.
Mm-hmm. Good luck.
Nice to have something for the kids.
I like having something physical too.
Okay, moving on, public comments on agenda-related items.
Up, we had old business.
Yeah, old business.
Old business.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Old business.
Proposed zoning ordinance amendment is going to be read at City Council on March eighteenth. That's it for old business, now public comment.
Okay, thank you, okay. Public comments on agenda-related items, all comments are handouts from the speaker at the podium, we'll go through the chair also. There might be any interaction.
Come on down.
Between the podium and audience, these rules cannot be followed, the chair can adjourn the meeting, limit five minutes.
Hello, I'm Sammy, excuse me, I'm Sammy Lucaskowitz, I'm the executive director of Manistee Tourism, and I live at three nineteen Fifth Avenue, right on the river. I moved to Manistee, bought a house after being a traveler here. And I, what your, your job is hard. And balancing the needs of Manistee, which is complex, is also very hard. Short-term rentals is complicated, and they are complex. I didn't say this before the public hearing because I wasn't sure it would come up, but here we are now. Just to maybe correct Commissioner Shmansky. The short-term rentals, they don't all collect the assessment. We're governed by Public Act fifty-nine, only units of ten or more have to collect the assessment. So these one-offs will not, so it doesn't create any more taxes for us. Secondly, in Public Act fifty-nine, room is defined as is a facility, and transient guest is defined. So, I'm not an attorney, but I know one who just argued Public Act fifty-nine in front of the Supreme Court, so, and she's our attorney too. But, uh, room is defined, transient facility is defined, and transient guest stays in a rental for twenty-eight days. So, just FYI.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Well, this is a public comment. Okay, so, this is on agenda-related items? So, sorry about that, we, we'll get you there.
It's not?
Yeah, it is, it's.
No, it's.
We kind of missed the agenda-related items, that was way back.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is anybody.
Okay, so we went?
He can come.
He can come up.
He can come up now.
Yeah, you can come up.
Come on up, come on up, you can come.
I'm going to go three times.
Come on, you can come.
I'm George Butler, five four seven First Street. I'm the executive director of Tiny Developers, and we'd like to build homes for sale, for owner occupancy, not for rentals at all. And we'd like to target the eighty percent to hundred percent AMI income levels. And we find that that's really hard to do, to be able to build and sell to someone at, even at a hundred twenty percent AMI. So we're targeting one twenty on down to one hundred ten, one hundred percent, even lower, even down to eighty percent. And so we've done a lot of spreadsheets, done a lot of research with subcontractors, and we would do the general contracting within our team, Tiny Developers, our board of directors is quite expert in many things. So, with the cost per square footage, we'd like to build, let me start to say we're respectful of the city's square footage minimum at nine sixty. And so we've designed two homes that are not, ten twenty-four. Two different models, but our request is for you to think about if you would allow a duplex within a ten twenty-four, meaning five twelve side by side with five twelve. We believe we can build that and sell that to eighty percent AMI. And that's tough. We're nonprofit, we don't need a profit out of this, or after a profit out of this. We want to help the city, and that's our whole middle income. If we can't, if we can only cover the very top of our middle income, and that's hard, we're volunteering to do the hard work. We believe we have to build five units in order to apply for a housing TIF, to help keep that cost down. We believe we have to build in the city, we've looked at going out on a township, but we can't afford to put in a well and a septic system and be able to hit that income level. Plus the jobs aren't out there, and it puts a lot of burden on people. We really want to do this for the city, so we have one model that's five twelve and five twelve, it's in your square footage footprint. But would you allow it to be duplex within that? The other model we have is a two-bedroom with a garage included within the ten twenty-four square foot. We believe we can build and sell that to a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And again, that's a stretch. But we've done our homework, we've done a lot of spreadsheet work with people that are pretty expert, and we've had all the subcontractors, and we think we can do that. So we're looking for a place where we could plant five houses in the city. And then, Manistee County Council on Aging put out a request for proposals, and Tiny responded in their deadline for February first. And we said we'd like your back door, essentially. The southwest corner. And we would like to put some tiny housing in there, it's not really tiny housing. Tiny housing by definition kind of nationwide is under five hundred square feet. We're talking small, very small, five twelve and five twelve, or the two-bedroom would be seven fifty of living space plus a garage of three hundred feet. So that's our interest, we really want to help, we want to be a part of that. We want to put in, again, home ownership occupied houses. We want to maintain that low income level. We don't want anybody with wealth buying one of those houses, and doing what they want to do for rent or, or so forth, or to buy it for themselves. We want to provide for this segment of our, of our workforce, really. So we're wondering if, if MCCO A would have us. Would you allow it? They specifically ask for creative thinking, they ask for tiny housing. Yeah, I've been in there and I've talked with them before. We're interested in creating even cohousing, where there's a community of houses that work together to support that whole ministry of, of the center. If you can connect housing with sidewalks and sitting spaces, talking spaces, the common house is already there with the Waggoner Center. They already have five meals a week. You can bring people together, and a part of a cohousing unit would be you charge, um, everybody to work, every homeowner, to work five hours per month. Help with laundry, help someone get to a doctor's appointment, help with the meals, with the cleanup, help with the yard maintenance and things like that. Contribute to your community, build the community, build a neighborhood altogether. And my thought is that the MCCO A, if we were allowed, and if they had us, it's the best spot in Manistee for us to do something for seniors. Everything Tiny does is accessible. Low approaches, three-foot doors, everything is wheelchair adaptable. Roll-in showers, five-foot radius turnarounds, access to door handles, everything that's needed to make it adaptable. When MCCO A put out their first request for what they called Monroe, Monroe cottages, they were looking for duplexes, and they were looking for garages together in the middle. They were looking for two bedrooms, this is exactly what we've designed in the ten twenty-four. A garage, two bedrooms, wheelchair adaptability in some units at least, and we would do it in every unit, so it would be adaptable, you simply change out your sink so you can roll under it. Everything else we would have, all the passageways, all the doorways. So we want to do that. And I don't know the process, I'm just floating that with you. I sent a, a letter to you, I guess, I don't know when you received that, with a big attachment of four or five pages, showing our buildings and what we would want to do. So I'd like to follow the process, but I want to be here in person and let you know, we, we have a heart to do something here. It's got to be Tiny if we're going to sell it to this income level. And everybody's building for low incomes, and they're going to rent, and they're going to rent for nine hundred, eleven hundred a month, and there you go. Yeah, can't do that. So, that's, that's our thoughts, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I have?
Thanks for all that you do.
Good idea.
Before you go, I have a couple of questions for you. On your, your five twelve, is that a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom?
It's a one-bedroom.
One-bedroom.
Yeah.
It's a big bedroom. And a big bathroom where you can turn around in a wheelchair.
The ten twenty-four, that.
Two bed and a garage.
Now, would you do a duplex ten twenty-four, two ten twenty fours together?
We could do that, that's even more efficiency of lot size and also of the economy of building.
Very similar to what was originally presented to the, the council and approved, by the way, and then it never happened.
We, we met that.
Okay. Part, part of, I'm just FYI, part of the reason it was, they didn't get the, the grant. And the reason they didn't get the grant is because of the oil wells, so you have to address that.
Excuse me, because of what?
The oil wells in the backyard.
Oh, okay.
So just FYI, you have to take that into account for the funding. And, and what, what do you build for, what's your, your square foot building costs? Est, just give me a ballpark.
Well, it varies for these two, and, and matter of fact, the ten twenty-four with two bedroom, we consider it a three-foot extension maybe, so. It goes for, it's more for the, each side of the duplex, because it's intensive with all your infrastructure, I'm trying to think what the numbers are. It's something like one fifty.
Okay, that's.
Really low.
Very, very low.
Really low.
Because it's, three hundred and twenty dollars a square foot is the average cost in Michigan right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, we've got, we've got people that want to build for our vision, that's the key. And we can be twenty-five percent down, essentially, because we're not using a general contractor, though we've got them on our board. We've got the expertise there, but, uh, we're going to, you know, it's cookie cutter, so you learn how to do it, and. we're gonna, you know, it's cookie cutter, so you learn how to do it, and you go at it, and it's easier to follow, easier to supervise, so, yeah.
And, and do you have a, a financing leg of this? Do you have a connection with a financing wing?
We have, yeah, we've got, we've got some good people that'll put that together for banks that will work with, with our levels, but that's going way ahead, because right now, nobody wants small, nobody wants tiny. They're starting to, they've gone to seven hundred and twenty square feet now in Benzo- Benzonea, so that's encouraging, so one of our units, we could do there, but we're Manistee folks, and all of our boards are Manistee folks, and we wanna do it for our city and surrounding areas, but that's our hope.
Several of the proposals that have come before us, one of the big struggles is that our aging population has no alternative, they wanna sell their houses, they wanna downsize, but they've had no alternative housing, and if they're still able to live on their own, they struggle with, this would, this would fit that niche.
Absolutely.
And free up housing stock for-
Especially if you're a widow or widower, you know, five hundred square foot is-
And your kids can't home, huh?
Well, it would, it would free up housing stock for teachers-
Or family.
Whatever, coming in, sweat equity for homes.
Well, we need new, period, we need a lot more housing.
As a whole, we have old housing stock.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, it's a, it's a good idea.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Especially over at St. Mary or Wagner Center, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Public comment, comment.
No, okay. Staff and board reports.
I only have something very quickly. So, the chill grant, we have the thirteen recipients, and I just wanna show you, I was asked where those locations are for the thirteen residents, and so you can see that-
Wow.
We got the Maxwell Town.
You get it, yeah.
Yeah, and so they're all over.
I thought they were all supposed to be on that side.
No, only just whoever applied for, for SERF, and then if they met the qualified income area, yeah, so you can see that.
That's really neat.
Five in Maxwell Town, two on our side. Four in Maxwell Town Heights, one in Maxwell Town Heights.
Okay, very good.
Oh, okay.
And, and what's the option, or what's the possibility for an additional?
Don't know, do you have additional people?
Because of, yeah, because of what's happening right now.
Because Jerry's gonna be going in there very soon, we've got the environmental review okayed, and Jerry and I are gonna stop in all thirteen homes, start to take the floor pictures, go through the whole process to see what are their needs, health and safety, and then from there, we'll get the quotes, find out, and if there's money left over, we'll be going on to the next person who's qualified, so we've got our backup people.
Any options for additional chill money, chill grant money?
Might be, there is.
That was coming from the state, correct?
How many contractors did we have come to our meeting?
We only had three contractors come to our contractors in Jones. That's very sad.
But we have-
So, there's a lot of luck with Jones.
Three, three contractors, that's about half of what we have in town, isn't it?
We have a plan, though, to get other contractors, and there will be additional chill money or C B D G funds, but you have to close out one grant before you can apply for the-
Okay, super.
There's definitely need, there's a definite need.
Yeah, real nice job, real nice.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yeah, thanks, Teresa.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy, and thank you, Tracy.
Very nice.
Kaylin, you have anything? Laura? No, alright. Member discussion, and before we move on, I just wanna introduce Spart. Can't say it.
Starpace.
Starpace, yes, is our new member. Welcome. So we'll start with you.
As far as-
Any comments, any, anything?
Well, I do wanna go back to the lady that first spoke, I really didn't understand it was the, what she was going over. Priority, yeah, like the plans, so, there's some things, I, as I was listening, it's, so how would I get ahold of her to, to give her some ideas?
Teresa.
Teresa.
Master Glenn.
Yep.
If I can get her name and email.
Absolutely, yep, she's with Williams and Works, but, absolutely.
I didn't get her name.
Yep, Tanya.
And you didn't get a package, right? You didn't get a package for the-
I didn't get a complete package.
Yeah.
Oh, we said enough. Okay, Pam?
I have a real quick question about the social district. We extended it past thirty-one to include the Milwaukee House and the brewery over there, well, when I was driving back west, there's a sign on the lamppost that says you're leaving the social district?
Yes, you can't cross a state highway in the social, the social district rules prohibit anyone from crossing the highway, so we actually have two social districts, one on one side of the highway, one on the other, however, you can go down the Riverwalk because underneath, but you can't, you're by the state rules, you are not able to cross. Maple Street is not a state highway, so you can cross there, that's the, that's why, it is a little bit odd, but that's why.
It is odd, because it looks like you have to finish up your drink in that one block area.
You do, officially, unless you go down the Riverwalk.
Unless you go down the Riverwalk, okay, well, we need to make that a little more visible to do that, then, 'cause it looked really odd to me when I'm going, if I can't figure this out, nobody else is gonna be able to figure this out either. That's it. Nothing. I've said enough.
Marlene?
No, I, I, one question, I know on Washington, the old building that was bakery, ice cream shop antique, what is going on with that, are they, it's just still sitting there, is their permits expired, or anything, what's the holdup and what they wanted to put in there?
Scooby? Or apartment? No, no, Northern Hotel.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It's extremely expensive to remediate.
Yeah, it was costing.
They had a one point four nine million dollar grant that they're getting, or have got?
Yeah, they're working on a-
For stabilization.
And then historic, they were looking for a national, or national historic-
Designation.
Well, they were looking for a grant for developing historical properties.
We extended, that's a good question, we extended, what, last year?
Yeah, it was last year.
And it's a two-year?
I can look that up for you for next time.
Yeah, but I know that the first one had expired, and we had-
About a year ago or so.
Yeah, I think it was last year.
Okay, I can look that up for next time for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Marlene?
No.
No? Roger?
Oh, well, other than, I shot you a message today, north or south of the Catholic Central, we don't know what's going on.
I don't know what's going on there in Fidler Township, is anybody else? Yeah, but I don't know.
No, I, I got nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything, but I wanna thank everyone for staying.
Yeah.
More of this, it's nine thirty-nine, and staff are putting together this, we made some headway, so.
Lot of work, thank you.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. Yes.
We did adjourn.